Welcome to the Lancaster City Council Meeting. City Clerk?
Councilmember, Authority Member Johnson? Present. Ma'am?
Present.
Smith?
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Crist?
Present.
Mayor, Chair Perez?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you.
Housing Authority? City Clerk?
Authority Member Harvey? Ma'am?
Present.
Smith?
Here.
Vice Chair Crist?
Present.
Chair Zetto? We have a quorum.
I need a motion to excuse.
I move to excuse Chair Zetto and Commissioner Harvey.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Need a second? You seconded, didn't you?
Second.
No, not yet. It's okay, we'll wait for you.
Second.
Okay. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, so ordered. Thank you. The invitation is Pastor Robert Vino's Greater Works Christian Center.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Father, I thank you for Lancaster, our city, and for this council and the people that make this city operate in the excellence that it does. Thank you for your goodness, grace, faithfulness to all of us in Lancaster. Lord, we don't deserve your kindness, but you continue to pour it out in our city each and every day. Father, even with so many things facing this nation, I know that you still have a great plan for this United States of America and for our city. Bless us, Father, and continue to show your goodness and grace more and more. Open the very heavens above us and pour out your spirit and your blessing as never before. Holy Spirit, come, bring us closer and closer to our Heavenly Father as never before. Forgive us our sins and failures and help us to come to a true repentance that leads to your holiness, where we have turned away from you draws back, where we have neglected our duties as your children and your people, put us back on course and keep us on the path of your righteousness. Help us to not only say the words "One Nation Under God," but live this truth every day and in every way. Bring us back to our roots, the Word of God, the Holy Bible. Manifest your glory, your power and presence in our nation and in this city, Lancaster, so that everyone will know that you are the one true God. Again, I give you thanks and I bless your holy name, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you. Church, please remain standing, place your hand over your heart and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a Job Services Network presentation.
Mayor Perez, you might want to take the SOAR student first, this is about a six or seven minute presentation, if you'd like.
No. Okay. Let's do the presentation, then I'll do SOAR, okay?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Roxy Carmanian and I work in the Public Works Department. It is my sincere pleasure to be with you this evening to provide you information about the job fair that took place at the Lancaster National Soccer Center on September 26, 2013. This report will highlight the partnerships and individuals that helped us put this job fair together, and with your help, we would like to provide certificates of appreciation to those agencies this evening. The city of Lancaster was very fortunate to partner with the Job Services Network. This is a group of about 12 nonprofit organizations that meet on a monthly basis to share and discuss job leads with the goal of getting people hired. The three primary lead agencies that helped us with this job fair and the individuals that they are represented in those agencies are Claudia Hernandez with the Jewish Vocational Services, David Magnarames with the Los Angeles County of Education Game Division, Matt Sheridan and Jeremy Mile with the Antelope Valley Union High School District. At this time, I'd also like to thank Rhonda Perez and her crew at the soccer center who played an instrumental role in helping us get all the things that we needed for the job fair, and that was Ramon Gallo, Joel Krotzer, Ishobeth, and Tom Davina. Ishobeth Camacho. We would also like to thank Bob Keys and Lynn Engel from the Antelope Valley Transit Authority who helped us by extending their bus line route number four to provide bus staffs at the soccer center. Bus line route four runs from the Lancaster City Park to the east side of Lancaster, so we were very fortunate to have them partner with us to provide transportation to the job fair. We'd also like to thank Lancaster and Palmdale Works Center staff partners who provided over a dozen first impression workshops. These workshops allowed people to obtain skills and tools to do well at the job fair, and we had over 100 certified job seekers attend, successfully complete this workshop. These people are allowed priority entrance to the job fair. We would also like to thank Close the Deal, which partnered with us, they provided free professional clothing and they were onsite at the job fair. There were several individuals that took part and leveraged these resources to help them make a good first impression at the job fair, and you can see a few of these individuals in the pictures. We were very pleased and very happy with the turnout. I understand that last City Council, you all had a chance to see the job fair video. We had over 45 employers attend the event and over 1,800 job seekers. This event, through community partnerships and sponsorships, was entirely funded through these community partnerships and sponsorships at no cost to the city of Lancaster. Again, these are some pictures of the turnout, which was extraordinary. Vice Mayor Marv Chris had an opportunity to interview a few of the people that attended the job fair. From the two dozen people that showed up at 7:00 in the morning and the job fair started at 9:00, we knew that we had people from Lancaster, Palmdale, Mojave and Acton at the event, so we were very happy with the committee outreach. Some of the employers that attended the event was Michelle Scott with BYD, Sears, Target, Silverado Power, which as you know has several large-scale solar projects coming online shortly in the city of Lancaster. Also, EroTech was there and they do the onsite recruitment for Lance Camper. We also want to say that we appreciated Bank of America allowing their clocked-in employees to also attend the job fair. Here are a few more pictures of the attendance. One picture stands out for me, it's very meaningful, and this is the one that I quickly took with my camera, with my phone camera. And this was after two and a half months of putting this workshop together and this event together. To see people actually filling out applications, there was over a dozen people when I snapped this photo, so I know that this job fair created an opportunity for hundreds of people to secure employment, and that was very rewarding for me. We'd also like to let you and the community know that on November 7th, there's going to be a job fair for veterans, targeted strictly to veterans, active military duty personnel and their spouses. November 7th from 10 to 1. If anybody is interested in learning more about this job fair, or if there's any employers that would like to participate, if they will contact the city, we'll get them connected to the job fair.
What's the number that they need to contact you at?
I'll give them my number. This is for the job fair, so, but I'll connect them to the other resources if that's the case, so.
Thank you.
Yes. And so with that, this concludes my presentation. If you don't have any questions, I just wanted to say thank you for allowing me to be a part of this extraordinary event. And I now at this time would ask, please, if the mayor could join me in presenting certificates of appreciation to these partners. Well, I thought he could say their names? Or do you want to say their names, or do you want me to say their names? Okay.
You probably should say the names.
Okay. Antelope Valley Transit Authority?
Well, I could've said that one.
Well, I think you can say.
Okay. I'll be waiting. No, you gotta give a speech. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
I can talk about electric buses.
Hey, okay.
That was very good.
The Jewish Vocational Services? Los Angeles County Office of Education? Game? Animal Valley Union High School? Thank you very much. Okay. Now we have the SOAR Student of the Month, and it's Caitlin Kirkbride Goodman. So Caitlin had perfect attendance, 9th through 10th grade. What happened in the 11th grade? No, you don't have to tell us, it's okay. She has academic achievement awards in the 9th, 10th, and 11th grades, Junior Honor Guard, 2013 College Prep Quest Bridge Scholar. What's that?
It is an organization called Quest Bridge, and it helps high school students go to top-tier universities.
Well, you're in SOAR, so we know you're gonna do that anyway, aren't you? I am so proud of SOAR, this, I burst every time I look at it, every time I drive by it. Well, drive by the college. The ABC Foundation Scholarship recipient, UCLA Mock Trial Institute Scholar. Whoa, whoa. You don't know how hard mock trial is. For her to do that at UCLA, that is really an accomplishment. And she has a fabulous goal. I mean, very few people have reached this height of a goal. She wants to be an attorney. You know, I don't know how much, how familiar people are with SOAR and what these kids accomplish. They are at the top of the nation. This city, we cannot be proud enough of what's happening at SOAR. And any of you folks out there that have high school-aged kids, beat them, make them go to SOAR. And, so we have a, something to hang on your wall, then we have $1,000 to put in your checking account. So how do you know the competition?
Which one?
You said.
Their 10 team and my team got second place.
Are you sure you have a good job?
Okay.
What are they gonna do, you won't make a statement?
Right here.
Mother probably gets something. Better father. Are you a little serious?
Yeah.
Well, you're part of your grandmother too, no, she's gonna come get you.
Grandfather.
Come on, get the picture, how big he is. I mean, those kids are the best of the best, and she's the best.
Yes.
Yeah, man, that is really good.
Yes. I'm not sure if I can see.
Any agenda items to be removed?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we respectfully request that CC5 be removed, and we'll bring it back at a later date and apologize for any inconvenience that may cause.
CC5?
Yes, sir.
Housing Authority? Kate, I need a motion and a second for the minutes.
I'll move to accept the minutes of Housing Authority, meeting September 10th.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So ordered. Let's see, speaker cards, we do have a speaker card. Michael Reeves.
Thank you.
Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Crist, Council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. I come before you to oppose this amendment of the lease that you approved in May with Topco. As you recall, I have opposed every solar deal that the council has brought up, and I'm especially upset at this one because Topco is assigning the lease to someone else. I had the presence of mind to print out the attachment to this, and some of the things that's said, like in the recital, it says, "Topco and Lancaster Housing Authority wish to amend the lease as set forth." Well, as a citizen of Lancaster and the housing authority represents me, I don't want to amend the lease. Down in the agreement to amend the lease, under Section 1A, there's the part about the, "We will be paid semi-annually." We may not be paid anything if this is assigned, because we don't know what's going on. Further, the attachment says that this is not, the Lancaster Authority doesn't agree that Topco is under default, but if they're not under default, they must be selling it for profit. So either they, I think we should use our clause in the original agreement to sue them under the original clause. Why should we let Topco go out and sell the lease and make some money if they're not under default? If they are under default, we'll sue them anyway. We're getting in the business of being real estate agencies. I think this should be explained more carefully, and I think it should be rejected at this time, and we should hold Topco to their lease. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I need a motion and a second?
Second.
I'll move to approve HC, CC1.
Second.
We have a motion, second, let's vote.
Vote is 3 to nothing, turn it back over to Mayor Perez.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the City Council Successor Agency Financing Power Authority Regular Minutes of October 8th, 2013?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Consent calendar, anything to be removed?
Uh, CC3, I mean 2.
Can we, Mayor Perez, can we clarify the second and the vote count on that, please? I don't mean to rush through things, but I just want to make sure that.
Oh, what?
Marvin and I both said so moved, and no one seconded.
Yeah. I seconded it.
On the minutes?
Okay.
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 I seconded.
Right. We call for the question, and I say aye.
And we thought that federal government was dysfunctional.
Thanks.
Thank you for that.
You put me in that same group, thanks a lot.
Okay. So, let's, is there a motion to approve everything but CC2 and CC5?
I'm gonna do CC2 first.
No, I'm gonna approve the consent calendar.
Move to adopt the consent calendar as currently comprised? I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, now you got a vote on that.
Sorry.
It's unanimous.
Okay, CC2, Richard Collins, Rick Collins.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, distinguished staff. My name is Richard Collins, my address is 897 Fording Island Road, Unit 707 Hilton Head Island, Bluffton, South Carolina, zip 29910. The city attorney has my information. I'm here to speak tonight and to say hello to many familiar faces regarding the retirement plan on the agenda for the consent calendar. As you all know, I was the city code enforcement manager here for over 25 years and separated service, and when I separated service, it was done by agreement. And one of the line items in that agreement was that I was to be put into the city retirement plan for valuable consideration. And a number of years have gone by, staff has changed, I've relocated, and it hasn't been addressed. And I'm here this evening to ask the policymakers to have the appropriate parties look into this matter, and as you can well imagine, 25-plus years protecting the public health and safety and welfare of this community, I feel as though I've continuously protected the public trust here, and I would like somebody to look into that separation agreement and those documents that required me to be put on the retirement program for health insurance. That's why I'm here, it's fallen through the cracks. I happen to be visiting my son and grandson here, and I see a lot of familiar faces, and while I'm in town, I just want to compliment you on what you've done with the downtown. It is amazing, you had very little to work with, and I applaud you all for what you've done. It's creative, it's unique, it's vigorous, and it works. And I live about 40 miles from Charleston, South Carolina, and it looks just like it. And you've done well, and I am familiar with the protocol. If the policymakers will look into my matter and get back with me after my information, and I appreciate your time.
Okay, you'll take care of that, Mark?
Yes, I will, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Rick.
Good to see you all. Thank you.
Tangently, real tangently, but that's okay. Let's open the public hearing on PH? Oh, yeah, we gotta vote on that.
Yeah, we need to vote on CC2.
So moved.
Second. Let's vote. It's unanimous. Okay, public hearing item number one. Any speaker cards?
No.
Waive the staff report?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
A motion that we approve PH1.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. New business item one, is there any speaker cards? There are.
Wait your staff report.
Kelvin, to 10? I'm not even gonna try. Can't we change your last name? Would that be inappropriate? Took me 10 years to learn to say Bozegi.
If you're willing to adopt me and put me in your will, sure.
So moved.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you for allowing us to do this presentation tonight. Before you, you have two agenda items related to Destination Lancaster. For your benefit, I'm only gonna do this presentation once, so we won't have to do both times. As you're aware, Destination Lancaster is made up of a joint partnership with the city of Lancaster, the Antelope Valley Fair Board, and our T-Bid Hotels who have come onboard to Destination Lancaster earlier this year. I do want to recognize Councilmember Ma'am, mayor you've appointed to the board, who has given us some valuable insight and some direction on the board. And the first item here, NB1, has to do with the bylaw amendment that we took to Destination Lancaster this month at the great suggestion of Vice Mayor Crist about including the Lancaster Chamber of Commerce to the Destination Lancaster Board. It makes a lot of sense to us, there's a great nexus between the business community and Destination Lancaster. Some of the things that, what's already occurred, in order to make this ratified, or in order to make this effective, actually, the City Council and the AV Board has to ratify these bylaw amendments, and that's why it's here before you tonight. And once both entities have approved that, then it becomes immediately effective, where the chamber then can take a seat on the board. Tonight, you're also gonna hear from one of the board members, Randy Miranda, who's the general manager for the Hampton Inn, who'll actually give you some information of what's taken place over the last eight months since the T-Bid has been formed with Destination Lancaster, and some of the future things that we, Destination Lancaster intends to do or proposes to do for the community. And again, creating a destination point for Lancaster. So he will come up here tonight, we'll also talk, and we'll talk about item number 2, NB2, which happens to be a partnership between Destination Lancaster and the Lancaster Community Services Foundation, who will act as a conduit for a new event we're very excited to talk about tonight. And then we'll have Louise Garibay, who's the staff liaison for Destination Lancaster, wrap it up for you, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Miranda.
Who did the logo?
Actually, I'm not sure who did the logo.
Duncan Davis. Initially, the logo was put together by, I think it was a local firm, Davis Communication.
Excellent, excellent work.
Good evening. As you can see here, Destination Lancaster is working on, really just, primary focus right now is marketing our efforts to promote tourism to the Lancaster area. You can see that we're trying to do that through several of the local and social sites that we can actually get that word out to the community, to track business, and possibly create more room nights in the area. So our next slide, actually, we're promoting some of the events, such as the field of drafts that'll take place on November 9th. We're actually really excited, I actually am very excited to see this type of event come in, where these events are very, becoming very popular across the country. Kelvin, to tent? I'm not even gonna try. Can't we change your last name? Would that be inappropriate? Took me ten years to learn to say Bozegi.
If you're willing to adopt me and put me in your will, sure. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you for allowing us to do this presentation tonight. Before you, you have two agenda items related to Destination Lancaster. For your benefit, I'm only gonna do this presentation once, so we won't have to do both times. As you're aware, Destination Lancaster is made up of a joint partnership with the City of Lancaster, the Antelope Valley Fair Board, and our T-Bid Hotels who have come onboard to Destination Lancaster earlier this year. I do want to recognize Councilmember Mann, mayor you've appointed to the board, who has given us some valuable insight and some direction on the board. And the first item here, NB one, has to do with the bylaw amendment that we took to Destination Lancaster this month at the great suggestion of Vice Mayor Crist about including the Lancaster Chamber of Commerce to the Destination Lancaster Board. It makes a lot of sense to us. There's a lot, there's a great nexus between the business community and Destination Lancaster. Some of the things that, what's already occurred, in order to make this ratified, the, or in order to make this effective, actually, the City Council and the AV Board has to ratify these bylaw amendments, and that's why it's here before you tonight. And once both entities have approved that, then it becomes immediately effective, where the chamber then can take a seat on the board. Tonight, you're also gonna hear from one of the board members, Randy Miranda, who's the general manager for the Hampton Inn, who'll actually give you some information of what's taken place over the last eight months since they, the P, uh, the T-Bid has been formed with Destination Lancaster, and some of the future things that we, Destination Lancaster intends to do or proposes to do for the community. And again, creating a destination point for Lancaster. So he will come up here tonight. We'll also talk, and we'll talk about item number two, NB two, which happens to be a partnership between Destination Lancaster and the Lancaster Community Services Foundation, who will act as a conduit for a new event we're very excited to talk about tonight. And then we'll have Louise Garibay, who's the staff liaison for Destination Lancaster, wrap it up for you, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Miranda.
Who did the logo?
Actually, I'm not sure who did the logo.
Duncan Davis.
Who?
Initially, the logo was put together by, I think it was a local firm, Davis Communication.
Excellent, excellent work.
Thank you. Good evening. As you can see here, Destination Lancaster is working on, really just primary focus right now is marketing our efforts to promote tourism to the Lancaster area. You can see that we're trying to do that through several of the local and social sites that we can actually get that word out to the community, to attract business, and possibly create more room nights in the area. So our next slide, actually, we're promoting some of the events, such as the field of drafts that'll take place on November ninth. We're actually really excited, I actually am very excited to see this type of event come in, where these events are very, becoming very popular across the country, and it's the first of this kind in our area, and that'll actually take place in February, on February first, at the Pioneer Event Center. So it's a very, very exciting event that we actually have coming to our area.
Do you want to explain a little bit more about the Color Me Rad?
The Color Me Rad is actually, it's a 5K run, so obviously it's promoting, you know, health and fitness in our area. From what I understand, the registration has actually been very successful so far.
I understand we have twenty-one hundred people already registered.
As of Friday.
Yeah, I've heard it was very close to those numbers, so that's very exciting to me.
This is a...
Yes, and I'm sorry to interrupt you. It's twenty-one hundred as of Friday, and the maximum that they'll accept is five thousand because they foresee it going past that. So we're looking for at least two hundred volunteers to help for this event.
Right.
So.
That's great.
It's an absolutely amazing event for us to show off our town.
We get to charge them?
It's a company that pulls this together, and then there's a nonprofit organization that will be involved with this event.
Right. So this is exciting. We're also working on a very attractive piece of collateral that we can actually offer in both hard copy and digital copy, that will actually feature a calendar of events, of the events that we have existing in the city, to promote those for future visits to the area. So, which actually kind of brings us to the next slide. You know, one of the areas, or one of the medias that we can actually distribute that digital copy is actually through our TripAdvisor partnership that we're looking at, sorry, that we're looking to have. They'll be an area where there is a booking engine that will take the visitor directly to the hotel site to book room nights. They'll be able to, as you could see, add photos and videos, as well as download that collateral that we're actually offering that has that calendar of events. So that's a very exciting opportunity for us to enhance and get that exposure for future visitors to come into the area and actually generate those room nights and tourism in Lancaster. In efforts to prepare for that, the T-Bid Hotels will actually make an effort to actually train the staff members that they have on hand, ideally all staff members, but of course the front desk staff that is the front line, communication for our guests. And we'll likely actually encourage them to focus on the areas that we actually have events for that particular month or that particular season. So if there are guests inquiring about other locations, or restaurants, or venues, or other attractions, that we're actually well-trained, because we don't want to give the impression that we're not knowledgeable about our city and what we have going on to offer. So that's actually what we have so far. I know that Louise actually has some items to speak on as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. One of the other things that Destination Lancaster just finished working on is its first marketing campaign. Working in collaboration with the Antelope Valley Fair, Destination Lancaster sponsored a banner ad campaign specifically targeting areas outside of the Antelope Valley. The goal was to try to increase exposure for the event, increase ticket sales, and then obviously potentially create some new overnight stays for our local hotels. Now, although we don't have the final reports completed yet, we do know that the campaign had created over 1.2 million impressions and had a click-through rate that was more than three times the national average for these type of events.
Explain that, explain that, what that means.
Essentially, we, the examples of the banner ads that you see there were placed specifically targeting areas outside of the Antelope Valley. For people that are interested in rodeo horses, you know, we picked certain demographics that we're going after. And the click-through rate essentially is, once they see the ad, is the actual impression. If they actually go on to click through the ad and visit the website and have an opportunity to buy the tickets, then that's what they measure. And again, that's where we came up, and like I said, we don't have the final report, but we do know that the, it was very successful in terms of the conversion there compared to other similar campaigns or this type of event.
Okay.
Now, although we haven't, you know, this is exactly the type of example of the value that we hope Destination Lancaster can add to local events and local attractions to increase visitors here in the valley. Now, as Kelvin mentioned earlier, the two items that you're voting on tonight, staff believes will help strengthen Destination Lancaster and help the organization create new events. The first item is ratifying the bylaw amendments to include the Lancaster Chamber of Commerce as an official partner of Destination Lancaster. And here tonight, representing the chamber, we have this year's president, Mr. Gene Meltzer. As a partner, what the chamber will be providing is their staff to help handle some of the day-to-day activities of Destination Lancaster. This includes responding to inquiries that we may get, either online or by phone, updating the event calendar for the things that are going on here, and helping manage the Destination Lancaster website. The chamber offices downtown will now serve as a new visitor center for Destination Lancaster as well, where someone can walk in and pick up a copy of the visitor's guide, get additional information about the area, and get recommendations on other things that they can do while they're here visiting Lancaster. This is to be a very value, valuable and welcome addition, since we currently have very limited staff kind of handling these things on behalf of Destination Lancaster. The second item for your consideration is creating a partnership with Destination Lancaster to develop a new national high school film festival. Now, earlier this year, the Antelope Valley Union High School District had a similar film festival that was hosted down here at the Boulevard Cinemas. What we hope to do is to replicate that model across high school districts across the United States, and then eventually host a national, the national finalists here in Lancaster. One of the biggest incentives for students who participate in this festival, in this event, will be the opportunity for them to win scholarships. And this is why Destination Lancaster is seeking to partner with the city to ensure that the money raised for the event and for these scholarships would be tax-deductible for potential donors. There would be no direct cost to the city, and the, only the funds that were raised by the event organizers would obviously be allocated for the event. By approving that item tonight, it'll allow Destination Lancaster to continue to develop the program and begin seeking scholarships. This is just a quick snapshot of some of the things that Destination Lancaster is currently working on to attract new visitors to the community, and to also enhance their experience once they're here in Lancaster. As Kelvin mentioned earlier, Councilman Mann is currently sitting and representing the city on the board, so he can give you a little more insight in some of the things that we're working on. But we continue to look at new and innovative ways to help brand the community, get the word out, and bring new people to the area. So with that, we'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have regarding either item.
Can you go back to one of the original slides?
Say one.
Back, way back.
No, here you go.
Right there. All those events on the bottom are Lancaster events?
One of the goals of Destination Lancaster is to promote events that attract visitors from outside of the area. And I know, I guess you're referencing Grace Fest. It's a huge event that brings in a lot of people from out of the area. The goal is to work at events like that, to make sure that when they come and they spend the weekend here in the Antelope Valley, that they're spending the weekend in Lancaster and attending the event and shopping in our local restaurants and enjoying the downtown.
Well, we applaud you for the creative thinking, and actually, that is the key, to have all of these events, to bring the people to come visit our town and see what we're really about. And all of these extra services that we'll be able to have will really help and really be able to show off our town, and hopefully make a lot of these events annual events, and the word gets out, and they tell their friends, and then we are multiplying people coming to visit our city. So we applaud you for thinking outside the box, everyone as a team, and making it actually happen.
Good job.
Yeah. You know, Mayor Paris and the council, I just want to tell you, I think that this is gonna be a real win by adding, you know, the representative from the chamber. I think the collaboration and then the synergy, what they're gonna bring over on the business side, I could tell just at the last meeting that, that you can be, do some future thinking and see what's possible, and I think that's gonna be a win. Plus, it brings people to the downtown. I think that's a good move.
Thank you. Can we vote on these together?
No, 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 we got Michael Reeves.
They're distinct items, they should be handled separately.
I'm sorry, what?
They're distinct items, they should be voted on separately.
Okay, but Michael Reeves, speaker cards. Are you here to complain about the Grace Fest, or?
Mayor Paris, council, ladies and gentlemen, I don't want to rain on anybody's parade, but I oppose this. I think we should utilize our Chamber of Commerce instead of spending four hundred thousand dollars to create this new entity, which is gonna be composed of different directors from different organizations. This is the second time that I've gotten up and recommended that the council use the Lancaster Chamber of Commerce to promote the city. The chamber needs our support and help, it's a private organization. The city's getting involved in this stuff. And one other thing, I had the presence of mind again to print up the attachment to this agreement, and this is not first-year law school, but if you take a look at this attachment, it has things scratched out and corrected. We, if you're gonna have a legal document in front of this council, it should be perfect. It shouldn't have seven scratched out, eight appointments and add additions and stuff. If you're gonna submit a document before the city council, it should be perfect, and this is, this is garbage. But going back to the original point, let's use this money for the Chamber of Commerce and let them promote the city, not create another entity comprised of different groups. Thank you.
Mr. Reeves, I think that's called a red-line version so that we know what changes occurred. It's deliberately done, it's not by accident, it's not garbage, it's what you're supposed to do. Okay? Thank you.
And Mayor, for the record, too, I think there's some confusion, and maybe, maybe staff can spend a little time with Michael after it's over with. The, currently, the funding is through the T-Bid, and that's not to be mixed up with item NB two, which is the four hundred thousand for the, for the partnership. It's two different things, and I just don't like the, the people being misled publicly about, about the two different items.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Michael motion that we approve NB one.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Is there a motion on NB two?
I'll move we approve NB two.
I'll second that as well.
Oh, well, interesting. New business item three, city attorney.
Councilmembers, Mr. Mayor, before you tonight are four resolutions. These are our standard resolutions to call for the election on April eighth of 2014. Resolution thirteen dash fifty-seven calls for and gives notice of the election. Thirteen fifty-eight requests county assistance with regard to the election. Thirteen fifty-nine sets forth regulations for candidates, and thirteen sixty handles the event of a runoff election in the event of a tie. Again, the election is scheduled for April eighth, 2014. Two council seats are at issue, and they're for four-year terms. The filing period will open on December sixteenth of this year and close at 5:00 p.m. on January the tenth, 2014, extended five days if an incumbent does not file. Those are the items before you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Michael Reeves.
Mayor, council, staff, ladies and gentlemen, if I recall, the voters in this city voted to consolidate the elections with the general elections in November. Now, it was under my impression that it was mandated, and it wasn't just an advisory vote. I think these elections should be consolidated with the November elections, federal and state elections, that would give more people an opportunity to go out and vote. Right now, there's a, we have few people that vote in our school board and our local elections in the spring, but we usually have a good turnout in the fall for the governor, and senator, and presidential elections. So the council should give thought to consolidating this election with the November election. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm having dinner. Could we do that from a vote from the council, move the election date, or would that require a vote of the citizens?
It would require an ordinance.
Even if it extended our terms?
That would require a charter amendment.
So there's no way to go back?
At this point, no.
And in order to do a charter amendment, we'd have to do that in April?
It would have to be, a charter amendment would have to be on the ballot at a statewide primary or general election, which would be in June after the April election.
Okay, thank you. We'd also just do the election by mail, couldn't we?
Yes, but that would require you to adopt, to adopt an ordinance to establish that as the procedure, and we are not far enough in advance of the deadlines for the election to be able to do that at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Plus, if you could clarify, because Michael Reeves makes a point that a lot of people do, is that you get a better turnout during the presidential election, but it's my understanding that that is against the law, where that we can't do it during a presidential election, it has to be on the off-years.
It has to be on the off-years.
I don't think it's statutory, I think it's because the county won't do it.
The county will not do it. The county will not allow the consolidation with a presidential election, it would have to be in an off-year.
I understand they're reconsidering that.
That's, that would present a different issue if they did.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, good evening. I wanted to talk tonight about the elections, and I'm gonna come round about, in 2005, I was very inspired by Einstein's hundredth anniversary of his great year, and I had a couple of good ideas myself in 2005. And the first was the Human Accountability Project. It was a traffic initiative, basically, to help people drive better, to help people get used to the government amassing great amounts of information about them, and also to gain the economic benefit of the future of developing these systems that would control these cars. Mayor, I'm still indebted to you for your state of the city, where you mentioned Coursera to me. I have in front of me the October sixteenth release of my social psychology certificate. This was a grueling class, and I'm learning so much, I'm in a bunch of other classes. But during that talk, you talked about the Google car, and I thought about that. The only people that commented on the Human Accountability Project and the controlling of traffic derided it by saying, oh, and you're gonna control the electric cars. Of course, that's the future, but you can't say that because it puts people even further out about the idea, is inconceivable. And I wanted the Human Accountability Project to work, to get the economic benefits of developing here in our city these systems that would bring those controls online and guide us into the future. The other idea was to charter our city, that was also to move us into the future, and we never did do what I wanted to do, which was get the strong mayor system, which would have alleviated Palmdale's problems and our future problems. And I want to talk about that, because if you have a strong mayor, he can be elected by the majority of the people, and the council members, or aldermen, or wards people, they represent different districts. This gives us tremendous flexibility, even greater than we now have, and it starts this slow process of moving us away from the control of the county at our own pace, we decide. So there are tremendous benefits to that, not the least of which is to not get sued or be put in this position where protected classes get shuffled into a situation where they'll remain protected. I think that we all have to come together as human beings and realize we're all one people. There's one protected class, it's all of us, we have to work together. This history of mankind on Coursera, it talks about homo sapiens advancing, and we are what happened to the world, not the world happened to us. We have to find a way to raise our consciousness to all be one people, and people can coalesce around a strong mayor who actually administers the city. And people can coalesce around a strong mayor who actually administers the city and the counterweight of the council people to his authority. We charter a path, we get away from the county in all these services that we want, and we're much better off. That's my idea. Thank you.
Thank you, David. You know, there's some people out there that think I have enough power.
Yes, I'm one of them. Can we take these resolutions together?
Yes.
I'll move that we adopt resolution number 13-57, 13-58, 13-59, 13-60.
Second. Okay, let's vote. It's 1 to 4. New business item 4.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Before you is the introduction of ordinance 994, which is the proposed building code. The state every three years adopts new building codes, and Lancaster adopts it here locally with local amendments. Also before you is a resolution that makes the findings necessary for the Building Standards Commission and the California Energy Commission. The thing to note in this building code cycle for us is the adoption of, the implementation of solar energy systems on all new dwelling units. And we have been working with the California Energy Commission. They've helped us with the wording of our language and our findings. They have been very supportive. And so what I would ask is your consideration for the new building codes and, in particular, our newest amendment, which is the solar energy systems for residential developments.
Thank you, Mr. Neal.
Yes, sir.
You know, I was watching the mayor from the south, and he was saying if they built the power plant, it would clean our air, and perhaps we won't need this solar. Is that right?
That's, my opinion is absolutely false. Power plant burns fossil fuels that put pollution in the air. The solar that we're proposing provides distributive power where it's needed most. It provides clean energy, will help us long-term into the future stabilize our electricity rates. It's just a smart thing to do. It's actually very consistent with the direction we are going as a state. And in fact, our building codes are moving in that direction where we will see mandated by the state net zero homes. The target date is to be in building codes in about 2020.
Really? And we were the first to build one, right?
Yes, we are leading the state, and maybe that's why the state is so excited and so supportive of what we're doing, is because they want to see how we do this and how we can be supportive of things that they really want to see the whole state do.
Any doubt in your mind we can be net zero as a city in the next five years?
I believe we will be net zero electricity for certain within the next five years.
Okay, thank you. Get back to us on those building codes for 2020, what the state has in mind.
I could come back and give you a report about the general direction of the state because even in this latest round of building codes, our codes are becoming, require more energy efficiency, more savings on water, really helping the new construction to be more efficient, headed in that direction of net zero energy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any speaker heard?
No.
Is there a motion?
I'll move that we adopt resolution number 13-61.
I will second that.
All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
And I'll make a motion that we introduce ordinance number 994.
I second.
All in favor? I mean, let's vote. It's unanimous?
Okay. No action on the financing authority, no action on the power authority, no action on the successor agency. City manager. Just one announcement, more an observation. On behalf of staff, we're very proud of the partnerships that we've been involved with in the community, and I give Mayor Paris and the council a lot of credit for bringing that to this city over the last five years. You saw an example today of the hotels and the businesses. You see it downtown with the businesses. These partnerships are folks putting their own money up to support their businesses and partner with the city and market because they believe in the direction this city is going. And I think that sometimes gets lost in the wash. What we are doing as a city is not city government only. It's partnering with our community organizations, businesses, nonprofits, churches. And I just think it's a wonderful thing. It's exciting every day to just be part of what we're part of right now. And in terms of that, we have two events coming up. We have Boulevard, which is put on through partnerships, and we have the Field of Drafts, which is also through partnerships.
Thank you. All right, let's take 10, and we'll come back and do the public comments. I'm sorry, let's resume. I read a book last week that you shouldn't be sitting for more than an hour without getting up and moving around, and so that's why we took the break, just so you know. Willie Green. Good evening.
Vice Mayor, City Council members. My name is Willie Green. I reside at Civil Winds Apartments at Dundas Street here on Burn Avenue. I'm here today to represent to you a desire by people living in this community to have a neighborhood supermarket. My estimation is between Sierra Highway and 10th Street Avenue I to the Boulevard. There's approximately 2,500 residents, mostly seniors, seniors without transportation. I lived here for about seven years, and there's been a change in shopping in the area approximately three times during that period. This would give the seniors a feeling of independence where they don't have to rely on people to take them to shop. They can get out of their apartments, get some exercise, get some fresh air, and associate. This would give them something I feel to look forward to doing for themselves because there are seniors that are still capable of doing limited things and make them feel good about themselves. And I know that you have projects to enhance the quality of life for our residents, and I ask that you consider this into your programs. And I know that space is limited, and there's space on I, I don't know what it's designated for, but I wish that you would look into this and bring it about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. You know, that is a great idea. We ought to see if there's some grant money out there to help subsidize something like that. But it just makes absolute sense.
Yeah, we agree, and I think that's a great idea. We will look for grants. One of the items I'd like to forward, it's not a substitute, but one of the ideas behind the farmer's market was to provide the ability for some of that on Thursday evening, so... But yeah, we will look at that. It's a good idea.
Okay, thank you. Milton Richardson.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
My thoughts today is directed towards the tax bill, which is this particular tax which brought my attention because it brought my taxes up. This is about, close to $500. This tax is a tax that puts me in the red. It's a tax for, I believe I researched it, is waste management, which I understand they're going to take sewer water and clean it and then recirculate it back into the system. Okay? This tax, I believe, is high. It's a very high tax. Now, I know that we have a need for sewage, you know.
It's, just so I can clarify, it's the sanitation district. It's not waste management.
Oh, yes, sanitation district, District 14.
Right, right.
Yes. So it's not waste management. It's just sewage water.
Right, it's a district that includes this much of Palmdale.
Okay.
So Palmdale's represented on it, the county's represented on it, and we're represented on it. And we are aware that in a prior administration, they overspent. But then they left that pile with us.
Oh, okay.
You know, so we understand the problem, we just don't know what to do about it.
See, we're homeowners. I'm a homeowner.
Right.
And we don't want to be taxed out of our homes.
I agree.
We don't want to be taxed to a position where we can't eat or pay our bills. So what I'm asking for is that something could be done in the direction of this tax. I mean, if you can spread it out over a longer period of time with smaller amount of payments would be helpful. But with these large payments coming in all at once, all at once unexpectedly, closes off and disrupt all our finances.
Why can't we do that?
Well, just recently, we were able to get that bond refinancing, so we're moving into a new year, and hopefully we'll get to some kind of resolution to be able to lower that bill with the bond refinance. Unfortunately, there's two bonds on the sewer plant, and again, Mayor Paris is correct. Prior to anyone here sitting on or representing sanitation District 14, unfortunately, none of us had the opportunity to be the chief decision-maker. And years ago, and I think that Ron probably has the date, I don't know if it was eight years ago or seven years ago, unfortunately, there was a public vote taken, which was a little underhanded, I think. Yes, and it was a, everybody was sent a notice in District 14, and a vote was taken because there was a vote needed to be taken publicly because this is a bonded indebtedness by all the taxpayers. And ultimately, that is where we're here today. And the only thing that, to Mayor Paris's point that he tried to convey to you, with me currently sitting as the chairman, I am going to do diligently to try to see if we can't get that reduced. And one of the things that was done, again, just recently, was one of the bonds was remortgaged, and we took advantage of the current market, and we were able to lower the interest rate from about 5.5 to just a little over 2%. So that means now the payments could be possibly reduced. So currently, staff is working on what that financial impact would be to sanitation 14, and if at all possible, we're going to try to attempt to lower that tax bill that you currently got. Because you're one of many, I mean, think of yourself, one of the comments that I made here earlier this last year was, think of a senior citizen that's on a fixed income, and now they have to swallow that horrendous tax bill as well. You know, you and I are, we're still pretty young, and I'm not saying that, that obviously we can go out and, I guess, work harder, but think of somebody that 78, 80 years old, that's far past their prime in relationship to get in a, you know, to get in a full-time job.
Yeah.
And they're saddled with that very same type of tax bill. In fact, on some of their tax bills, the sanitation bill is the highest portion because they've been in their homes 30, 40 years.
You know, it's the highest portion on my taxes. It's the direct reassessment, which Proposition 13, it goes around that Proposition 13. I understand.
Yeah.
It makes it non-effective.
But again, I, we sympathize with you.
We got scammed.
Yeah.
The reality of this is they needed to expand out that plant to have recycled water. For what, Marvin?
What, I was told for...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Both of those plants are used for the Palmdale Power Plant. The tertiary water that goes from both of those plants, the one in Palmdale and the one in Lancaster, the excess water is supposed to go into the Palmdale Power Plant.
That was another, again...
That was one of the reasons they built it.
Again, another unbeknownst to anybody sitting here, because all these decisions were made before this administration come in, and I don't want to get started about it, but there was a lot of sneaky deals that were made unbeknownst to leadership, and Mr. Crist is correct that that water is to be used for the power plant.
And who was the chairman of the sanitation district when that was done?
I think that was Mr. Ledford, if you want to kind of...
You know, let's not make any mistake about it. The reason you are in, the reason a lot of people are in this fix is so that their power plant or his power plant can get built so that the toxic waste can spread over Lancaster. I mean, it is absolutely a sin, what occurred in that regard. But I want somebody to talk to the, you know, the executive director or whatever of the sanitation district, and I want to figure out a way for people that this does put in the red, they can have some type of payment schedule and some type of relief for this, or maybe we can just send the bill to the mayor and that other city.
Yeah, we could possibly see if we, because again, we've debated back and forth about
how that bill could be paid in the future.
That is often done with that kind of bill.
Right, right.
Payment plans for full sharing.
Again, the decisions were made with somebody else at the helm, and, you know, they took the shortcut, and, yeah.
Also, one thing, Mr. Mayor, if I can.
Yes.
Also, if you talk to the sanitation district, if you conserve on water, what they do is they set your bill by what they think the average rate of your square footage of what the flow is for a single-family home. If you conserve water and your water flow is actually less, they will give you a rebate. So it's good to actually calculate what your water bills are, and look at your water bills compared to what they say your flow is, and you might be able to reduce your bill.
Okay, that way. Okay, thank you. There's nothing that can be done, I mean, from here, from this?
Currently...
Well, actually, we're going to see if there is. And if you could check back with the city manager in two weeks, is that enough time?
Okay.
Yes, council member Mann and I will contact them, set a meeting up in two weeks. It'd be more than sufficient.
Okay, great. I think you have my email address and information on my phone.
It's on the speaker card, okay?
Okay, thank you.
So make sure we follow up, all right?
Okay.
Thank you. Dan Zelms, Zelmsir? Zelmsir, yeah. Oh, Dan, come on down, Dan.
I would like to just speak on a few things tonight. The first one, the requirement for solar on new buildings, I think that's a good idea, but I think in the long run, if you look at it, how the systems degrade, you know, if you're going to require somebody to do it, then there should be some type of insurance policy to cover it when it does start falling apart. Those systems do lose the ability to generate power five, 10 years. Those systems do lose the ability to generate power five, 10 years down the road. People are going to have those stuck on their house, and it's going to be another eyesore. The more I'm getting around the valley here, and all these fields that I'm seeing filled with solar panels, really, it's a great thing that it generates power, but it's really is, to me, it's an eyesore. And on the solar plant and the gas plant in Palmdale, you know, I've sat here and I've listened to people make remarks about gas plants and what they do. Never really said too much to anybody about it, but I have a brother that builds these things worldwide. He used to work for AES Power down in Palm, or Placerita Canyon. And my brother's been building the systems in Hawaii, Hawaii, Ireland, India, Pakistan. You know, these gas plants are built all over. And I think that it would be very wise of you all to get together with some of these companies that build these power plants. We have trains going through here, the MetroLink trains are putting out more smog and particulates coming up and down here as many times as they do a day, and the freight trains running through town here, than that plant will put out. I don't know a lot about the plants, but my brother's been building them. I know the systems that they put into it, and I've talked to him about it, I've been involved in it, and my job with Southern California Gas Company years ago, when we started putting them on our equipment for generating stations. Enough for that. And in my opinion on Senator Knight's committee, I think I'm becoming one of a growing number of people that are just tired of picking up the paper every day and reading about how, you know, this is bad, this is bad, everybody calling each other names. My God, we're grown-up people, and I'm getting tired of reading it. I would really wish that you guys could get your problems worked out, because I'll tell you what, I retire in about two years, and at this point, I'm looking at getting out of here, because I just can't stand what's going on here anymore. Okay? And what was said about Ron Smith? Ron Smith, I've been coming to these meetings longer than some of you've been up here on the council. What was said about Ron? Ron, I think, is an upstanding council member, and I don't know whether those were your exact words, or anybody else's words that were in there, but I think it was, I think he's out an apology. I think that he would be good on a committee like that. I don't care whether there's any elections coming up. Every one of you do something, you know, come election time to get noticed. I mean, that's how politicians operate, okay? You want to be noticed, so something comes up. And I'll finish off with this. The color run that you have coming up, I attended one of those in Las Vegas. Great, great way to generate money, I think. It's a very wonderful thing, you get people from all over the country, all you have to do is throw it on the internet. They had, I believe it was 42,000 people at theirs, quite a spectacle. It's a lot of fun. It's a big mess to clean up afterwards, but, you know, with enough water and, you know, people to do it, I think that it'll come out real good. And that's it for tonight.
Thank you, Dan. Dan, what would you suggest we do? You just heard, you just heard, where this man's water bill, this sanitation bill, got hit with $500, like everybody else did, for no other reason than they needed the tertiary water for the power plant, without ever telling anybody that's what they were doing. What would you suggest, when I have doctors telling me that when that power plant is operating, it will affect the health of the children of this community? Am I supposed to make friends with the mayor of Palmdale, say, "It's okay, go ahead and throw that crap all over our city," or should I fight? You know, you didn't have any problem with me fighting the gangs when they were hurting our children, and they were hurting our families, you applauded that. How is sending toxic waste over our soccer fields, our university at West Coast Baptist, our elementary schools, how is that something I should be happy about? I'm not happy about it. There's, and I'm sorry if Mr. Ledford wants to make it personal, but it is personal to the citizens of this community that that is going on. But the medical establishment is telling me that our people will get sick from what that power plant will spew over this valley. And it's not like they couldn't fix it. They could put scrubbers on that, so that wouldn't happen, but they're unwilling to do that. Now, I understand people like everybody to get along, but when somebody is doing something that is going to affect the health of the children in this community, I'm not going to be happy. And as long as I sit in this seat, I am going to fight for the welfare of those kids and those hard-working families. And, you know, I really have to pay attention to the journals and the science that comes out before I pay attention to the person that's building the plant. There is hard science on this. The World Health Organization just came out last week and estimated the number of deaths from these power plants. Now, there are places these power plants are essential. Certainly, we should be replacing coal-fired power plants with gas-fired power plants. But why would we put one of those in our community? What possible reason? None of that power is going to lower the bills in this community, none of that power is going to be powering our city. It's going to be put right on the grid. 35 jobs will ultimately be generated for that. We will affect the health of the people who live here, so that a corporation that has no employees here can get mega-rich over it. Now, initially, Palmdale had great plans for it. They were, that plant was going to be owned by their city, it was going to generate enormous amounts of money, which I applaud. But then they sold a $34 million investment, or $35 million investment, for $24 million. Now, why would we do that? Why would we say that's okay? Why do you want to look at that cloud every time you come out of your house? I mean, all I'm asking is why? And they have yet to been able to say why, except go on television and say it's going to clean the air. I mean, that's the nonsense we hear.
Well, I don't believe that it's going to clean the air. I believe that everything that we do out there in some form or other is going to cause some type of pollution, okay? It's just the nature of doing business, okay? But we try and keep it down to a bare minimum in what we do. We can't run every business out of the state, as this state has done, year after year, run the furniture businesses out of the state, run every business that wants to do something in this state out of here.
We're not talking about businesses, we're talking about our power plant.
Yeah, okay, all right. So I'm just saying, I'm not for the power plant. I'm just saying, because I have a brother that's been building these things for 25 years and that has been in the business, I know that they're a lot cleaner than what you've been told. I could go out and, just as you could find 20 people that will tell you that these things cause a ton of pollution, I could go out and I can find 20 people that say, "No, there's no pollution to it, this is how it works. You have a turbine, you burn the gas, the gas burns cleanly." Okay? That's it. I'm just saying, you've got trains running up and down here 10, 15 times a day that are dumping more pollutants into this valley than that power plant, I believe, ever will.
And we're getting rid of those trains also. The Antelope Valley AQMD is looking at getting rid of those trains because of the pollution that they produce. So I agree with you that it is going to be the largest stationary polluter in the Antelope Valley, the largest, ever.
Well, I'd like to see some information on it, you know, more than what I've seen in the paper, but, you know, like I said, I'm not for it. At this point, I just think that you should get all the information that you can on this, and there's a lot of companies out there building these things. And yeah, sure, they're going to have an opinion, but there's also a lot of science to what they do. They have to build these things, and they have to be safe in order to build them when they do, you know? And these are, the plants that my brother, you know, has built are 580 megawatts, this is what you're talking about getting to, just in the city, on solar panels, you know?
No, I think they're targets at 150.
They build plants bigger than that, you know? And these things are basically pollution-free because of the way they're run. And maybe they do have the scrubbers on them, I don't know. I don't talk to them about it that much, but, yeah, just getting back to it, you know?
546 times.
I'm getting real frustrated by, you know, what I see, reading the paper, about everybody bickering with each other, and it's just like, it's time to get past it.
And Dan, applaud you to come up here and say all of the things that you said, so we have the opportunity to explain or share the knowledge that we've received with our community. And just to make a little clearer regarding our Senator Steve Knight, we applaud him for being such a team player to make the entities meet. And it has nothing to do with bickering or arguing, it was just a conflict of scheduling, that's all it is. And I can say that, it has nothing to do with us arguing with either city or our senator for being proactive to make this happen. It was just a conflict of schedule, and that's not to say it won't happen in the future. So it really, and I hear what you're saying, Dan, I think it becomes more than what it needs to be, meaning the perception or the hearsay, but in reality, here, back here, it's not. It really is that everyone is trying to work together.
I'm out there amongst the public every day in the job that I have. I probably see, you know, more people than most others because of what I do. There's a lot of people that are really upset about it, you know? And when it does come time, you know, for people, you know, when the elections come up and stuff like that, you guys have done a lot of good. I don't want to see people kicked out, because, you know, people are upset about what's going on down there, you know? I've been here for 25 years or better, you know? And I just, that's...
Well, you got to admit...
My wits end over it.
Dan, you got to admit, they were fighting long before we took office.
Yeah, yeah, but...
I think, yeah. But we ask that the community trust us, as they have.
The act needs to be buried, and we need to get on with it, you know? If they aren't going to see it our way, then we do our own thing and stay out of it with them.
Thank you, Dan. Michael Reeves?
Mayor Paris, Council, ladies and gentlemen. I just want to let you know that I'm doing everything I possibly can physically and mentally to stop the power plant by changing the leadership in Palmdale. And I can say that I'm not an intruder from Lancaster that's intruding on the politics of Palmdale. I'm a person that was running for, last November, for the Antelope Valley Healthcare District Board, which includes Palmdale, Lancaster, and all the Antelope Valley. I have a vested interest in the AV, and I'm doing everything I can to make sure that the leadership in Palmdale changes and the power plant does not go forward. I just wanted to make that comment. I came up here to speak about the sanitation district, and I can remember when the mayor to the south, Mayor Ledford, was sitting right where Mayor Paris is, and Councilman Smith was sitting where Vice Mayor Chris was, and Mayor Ledford wanted to increase the fees for the sanitation district, and Councilman Smith would not let him. There were only two people there, county supervisor didn't show up. Councilman Smith kept us from getting a big hefty increase like we see on our property tax bills today. After he left the board, Councilman Mann came aboard, and he was able to help the restaurant owners in this community survive. If you've ever gone and seen some of the prices, the restaurant owners are suffering because of this hefty increase in the sanitation district 14. And I don't have any belief that the staff is going to do anything favorable, because I think that they're responsible for this increase. As you recall, the bond measure was passed to build the plants, and they screwed up on the building of it, then they had to go borrow some more money to finish the job, and that's how we got in this mess. So whatever you can do to have it investigated would be greatly appreciated, but as a person that has his property 70% underwater, I'm paying $300 more a year on my property tax bill that I did when my house was full value. This is the reality of it. Something has to be done about the sanitation district, and I hope that the council will pursue it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Jason Zink?
Hello, everyone. I just was at the county board of supervisors' meeting, because I was telling them how wasteful that government is, LA County, and why we should be coming out of Valley Community Service District and start just taking everything away from the county as possible. I mean, the county registry recorder's office, I worked at the polls for probably over 20 years, and they had wanted me to go from a Palmdale poll all the way to Calabasas, and I told them no. And after that, and it's just the things, a woman and her daughter signed up for some welfare, they sent out five letters within three days that were basically duplicate letters. So if you realize, there's a million people that apply for welfare a year in LA County, that's duplicate process, that's over probably $2 million just wasted in postage and letters and duplication. The sanitation district, which I don't know why anyone hasn't pounced on Ledford for allowing that to happen, just think what we could have done for $450 a year in building parks and redoing our streets and our neighborhoods. It was just the biggest waste of money. And we didn't get one federal grant or one state grant. There was two state water bond measures that passed, and Runner didn't get no money in there for us, a line item for us for Antelope Valley. They said, you know, Runner, in the bar, that he said, Runner, he created two jobs ever since to become a state person, one for him and one for his wife. Thing is, what's Knight done? He hasn't really done anything. He has Dad's last name, but what has he done? He hasn't really done anything. There's so much that we need to do that we should be getting from the state and federal government, and we're on a world stage now. We're not competing with the next county or the next city, we're on a world stage. And Antelope Valley Community Service District would do that, it would pull all of us together, it'd put all these games away, because we're playing middle games. We're not playing the big game that needs to be played with the world. And solar power, we have 17,000 acres of airport land. We could, at Site 9, we could put a solar manufacturer in there, from Spirit Corporation. They actually recycle old solar panels and redo them. And we could create jobs right now. And that 17,000 acres, that was a land scam. The people had bought the land and then sold it to the airport, the family members and friends of the Airport Commission back in 1965. So it's, that land is never going to do nothing, let's make something happen. We could actually make net zero LA County. Now, that's mission, and we got the power to do it. We got, three county supervisors are going to retire, we got all that power, why not use it? And just something else, on the colored curbs you guys are putting out, Neil, it's too light. It needs to be more contrast, more color. So it just, you might as well just stamp concrete. And on Seventh Street, on Avenue K, the sidewalks, you guys tore up the street to put the new line in, but there's that one section between Seventh Street, on Avenue K, between Seventh and Eighth, that you could have put a sidewalk in, you tore up the whole street, just like when you tore up the whole street to put Paul Park in on 30th Street West. You could have put a bike lane in, so people could ride their bike there. So there's a lot of stuff that we could do. I got some stuff here for, I'd like to see a clock tower for downtown area like Santa Cruz, and a fountain, because American Hero Park is a great idea, but there's no one using it, so we need to redo something. Maybe tear out some of the fields and put a pond in, so people can feed some ducks, or, you know, make it more lively, put a fountain in. And up in Seattle, the mayor did a solar power art project, and I got some picture stuff I'll give to the manager. And maybe we could do an annual event with solar power, invite some people and do that, but put some of these projects in there to integrate it. And the other thing was, though, in Little Rock, I grew up in Little Rock where we farmed, and what we did was a co-op. So all of us, all the farmers came together, we used our power to buy fertilizer in boxes and pallets and everything, so we could get them cheaper. So if we did a manufacturing plant here, a solar panel, which we don't have one in LA County, that just shows you the leadership, then we could actually reduce costs, 25% of cost of solar panels or transportation. So if we build them right here and put them out in the backyard, we're 25% ahead of the game. But the best part, we're employing local people. I have a whole bunch of other stuff, but I'll just leave it at that, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jason. Heather Brown?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Good evening.
I have the worst water in the world. You want to bring people in, the first thing you need to do is clean the water up. I know I always come to you and complain about it, but I've had my water tested, and recently I had a Siberian Husky die after four days of exposure to the water in my backyard. My system was down, and I got it running again, and after two days, she got parbo and got sick. She had shots, it killed her within 26 hours, and the vet said that she had extremely high levels of arsenic contamination. levels of arsenic contamination from my water, apparently, because the sprinkler water, she would go and bite the sprinkler. And if you would like to bring horse people in, you're going to have to clean the water up, because the water is depleting the livestock here. I have two horses, and one of my horses has the worst, I, apparently it's like a fungus that they get from water, splashing water on their legs, and it's almost like dandruff is what it looks like. And my horse isn't the only one out at Persley Ranch, there's several horses out there that have this from the water. So the leaching from the pipes has eaten my garbage disposal, I've had to replace my water heater twice, my swamp cooler is brand-new and it's already going, it's only one year old, I've had to replace pipes. My water bill is $245, and I have, I, I'm not even using sprinklers. So the property tax, as far as everyone else is discussing, has only gone up in Lancaster, that's it. That's the only city in, in LA County that the property tax has gone up. Now, if Ledbetter, or whatever his name is, Ledford, makes the mistake and does the power plant, and he makes a mistake, make him pay for it, don't give him any more money. I mean, I don't want to give this guy any money. I mean, what does he not, what is, what does he not have that he needs more money to buy? Seriously, if you need somebody to come and yell at him for you, I would be glad to volunteer for that. I'm just giving you the facts. Like I said, on every issue here tonight that I've heard people talk about, the facts. Um, as far as gas, fracking has got to be the worst thing to do. Solar panel is great, wind power is great. I kind of like parking in the shade with my car out at the college. You know, I don't know about you, but I think it preserves the car, it, you know, brings up property value. You know, the solar panels are fine. Um, now, natural gas, no, not fine. 50% of all fracking fail on the first, um, whatever they call it, pumping out of the, of the, uh, the gas out of the ground, because it's encased in concrete, and the concrete fails because the fracking chemicals that they use to prevent the drill from getting clogged from the rocks and everything dissolves the concrete. So it seeps up through, out of the casing, up through the sides of the concrete, and comes into the water, you know, aquifers, and pretty much kills everything, you know, unlike, you know, shower water. Um, which, I hope you had a chance to look at that copy of the complete assessment that I gave your office a copy the last time I was here. Um, 130% is really bad. My daughter has a rash on the back of her arms and her leg from the water. We try not to even use the water, but it is really bad, I have 310 particles. Okay, I'm sorry, would you-
Okay, Mark, have, have Public Works look at the water analysis, or whatever they call that, uh, and get back to me. For wherever, where do you live here?
On, on Lumber, right, right in town, right off 12th Street West.
Okay. I, I, you know, I want to, I want to get the, as close to her house as possible, the last test-
The gentleman that lives across the street, um, Stephen Hayes, is, I guess, the president of the Palmdale or Quartz Hill Water something or other, and when he moved in, I said, "Oh, you moved in here, oh no, this is, this water is really, really bad. It, it causes all the animals to have upper respiratory problems and digestive tract problems, it attacks your cerebellum, makes you really lethargic," which is kind of good, I guess, you know, gang members aren't going to drink bottled water. But if you don't have a filtration system, well, because, you know, it's going to, eventually it's like having 80 cats in your house. The water is.
I never thought of this for-
So, so, you know, if you don't, it, it makes you really lethargic, and gives you headaches.
Heather, you know, the science is the science, we'll, we'll get it.
Right, it's just the facts.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, great. Is that it? That's it. Any comments from the council? Okay, we're going to go into closed session for the purposes of a conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation, uh, and conference with legal counsel for existing litigation, and all matters listed on the agenda. Good enough? Let's go.
In closed session, the council considered one item of anticipated litigation, as well as the cases of Miracle Star versus Lancaster and Shabazz versus Paris. With regard to Shabazz versus Paris, um, the council voted, uh, four in favor, with Mayor Paris recusing himself to provide a defense in Shabazz versus Paris, an authorized defense thereof.
Thank you. Okay. It's adjourned.
The Housing Authority meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, November 12th, 2013, at 5:00.
The City Council meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, November 12th, 2013, at 5:00 PM. And Carol, I'm coming home.